The, uh, all council people here tonight, the exception to Chris Bright, he called in and his terms get the gall for the flu or whatever business going around, so, uh, I'll entertain a motion to excuse him for tonight.
I'll make a motion to excuse Chris for this evening.
Same as him.
And Davey, okay. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
We also have John Light and Laura Kelly here from staff and Sergeant Casey. Okay, the agenda approval, uh, have it in front of you, we don't have any suggested changes except that it's not, uh...
The only changes we're adding.
Okay, well, it's not waste management agreement, it's the bankroll agreement, but outside of that, it's okay. Entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
I make a motion to approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, quick mayor's report, why don't you bring up? Okay, uh, first off, we are taking a recording tonight with a small digital recorder. Uh, our old system is, is falling apart. Uh, we lose the microphone, so there's no microphone, so we'll have to talk clearly and everyone will have to pay attention. Uh, so this should work out. Second, uh, we have the Easter egg, annual Easter egg hunt coming up, this is from last year, and that's April the 6th, that's a Saturday, and so that will be coming up and will be run the same way. We're getting, we're working with businesses to, uh, for sponsorships to pay for the, uh, candies and such, getting volunteers to stack, sack the bags and such, so that is upcoming. The, we're gonna talk about the reservoir tonight, that's on the agenda hidden, but the reservoir status?
Yeah.
Yeah, and, uh, one quick comment, we're also working on the sidewalk, uh, the reservoir's doing fine. The sidewalk, uh, went through a couple of iterations, there was some, uh, property owner pushback for a while, it slows up a little bit, and in the process, uh, the, we, we looked at two designs, an ugly cheap one and a more expensive, pretty one, basically, and the engineers suggested going with the pretty, more expensive one 'cause they said we had the budget, and then when their estimate came in, we were like sixty thousand dollars over. Uh, not only was the construction cost, there's some additional engineering charges for various restarts. So we're having to go back and work on that a little bit and bring it back into the budget. So, uh, that's it for the, the mayor's, uh, report tonight, so, uh, next on the list is the staff reports. Okay, John, why don't you go?
I'll give a quick one on where we're at with the workstation, other than what you're gonna talk about. Last week we had most of the team fairs out, and as of, I think today, the substantial completion letter was executed. Basically, what that does is frees the contractor up on the logging, uh, it doesn't mean that we've accepted anything. Punch list has been drawn up, there's probably about twenty-five things on punch list items that need to be completed by the contractor in April, I think it's around the fifteenth, I'm not sure exactly, but that's the final day of contract. So hopefully the contractor will now, always stop them by then, and USDA and CPG, they'll come out, go do their inspections, they'll get their blessings, and then it will become an item for the council to accept this or not accept this. Everything is running well? You know, this time of the project, we started a few months ago, but, uh, everything worked out, if it would work out right now, and, uh...
Better now?
Laura.
I have nothing.
Sergeant Casey?
Uh, just a brief one, had a, I mentioned briefly at the last council meeting, we did have, uh, a bit of a spike for about a week, um, surrounding last council meeting, uh, in heroin-related incidents in town. It was isolated to that week, seemed to last about three or four days, and then it kinda died down. We did not have, usually pull inside, so that is a spike to that. And so, um, we have people coming in, uh, what have you contacted, down on overdose here in town, this, uh, deep off buses and hitchhiking, everything all the way up here from, uh, Downing Street, uh, to, to get what he was after up here, and, uh, they got him out of the hospital and gave him the Narcan, and cancelled out that heroin, and apparently pretty upset when I tried to steal the car in the parking lot, got to buy some housekeeper tonight, and go see the problem. So, uh, they took care of it.
They had to pay for it.
What's that?
Monroe had to pay for it.
Yeah, Monroe took care of it, um, yeah, and he did get away with the car. Uh, it's, it's not a sul- not a Goldbar incident, it actually happened just west of Sultan, but I thought it was worth noting, just, um, 'cause we always read about these in the paper, we had another car training accident, this time nobody was hurt. All this was was somebody not paying attention when they crossed the tracks, so that they got their wheels off the pavement on the right-hand side, and the car dropped and high-centered on the rim of the tracks, and they couldn't drive off of it. And, uh, and the next thing they know, here came a train, so they got out of the car, and, uh, they, they weren't able to save their car. So, uh, but it, it just is so important to pay attention crossing the tracks when there's crosser and not Sultan. And other than that, they don't have a whole lot there.
Tom, ready to start?
Sure, uh, I have actually a couple of items. We don't have the sign coming in from the west.
That's right.
To the city, so I was wondering if there was anything to add.
There is a, uh, a young guy crew that is known as County Unfortunately, they're in their GEDs, they're doing projects, and we're on their schedule to do, to finish up the sign, and it's part training, uh, part, uh, doing a project that they can say, hey, I did this, I'm gonna look for a job. Right now, I believe, uh, they've got a lot of projects, they're working on a, uh, handicap ramp for somewhere here in the city, and when that one is done, then they're gonna put their attention to the sign.
The other one is, you know, last, the last council meeting, we discovered that, uh, our new skater system, uh, needs a phone line, and I was wondering if we know what that means yet, if it actually entails, I mean, it sounds simple, but what does it actually? Do we know what it means, I mean, as far as actually doing it?
Well, we talked to, John, I met with the guys and talked about it, and, uh, it might be a simple solution to hotwire into one of our current phone lines, and we have, what, three phone lines coming in or four?
Three.
Three. Would probably cut us down to two phone lines for calls instead of three, or we could drop another phone line in. That's just something we have, we're gonna have to do next. It's not a, uh, a big crisis right now, it's, it's a loss of convenience, uh, but we still, we can still run operationally. And we just haven't, uh, we also, at the same time, we have a phone system falling apart on us. We wanna, uh, do some work about looking at getting the phone system, and hopefully we can do both of those at the same time.
Thank you, and that's actually where I was trying to go to, because I'd forgotten about that piece too, the intercom system is yelling from one office to another.
Yeah.
I mean, talking loudly.
All right.
Yeah, thank you, I appreciate the update.
Okay. Is it?
That's it.
Baby?
Hi.
Kid?
Yeah, um, so I learned a lot of things after the fact, but, um, the finance committee is a commitment to meet here every, um, every Monday before the council meetings at ten AM, and we would appreciate if the vouchers were prepared. If there's no access to the room, we will find a place to do that, but that's our meeting time, and we had three people here, um, that didn't get the notice, and, um, so we'd just like that courtesy.
Well, I, I, I informed your fourth.
Yeah, yeah.
Committee person.
Understood that after the fact.
Yeah, I, uh, understood that after the fact too.
Yeah. I wanted to show it's warming up, but I now forgot what it was, so, I guess we'll put it as like...
Okay, just, all right, we're in the process. Okay, next we have the citizen comments. One, two, three, okay, and we'll move right on. Uh, we have, we're not gonna have a first reading tonight of stormwater utility ordinance. Uh, what we're gonna do has, is have a discussion about it and bring it up, uh, and, uh, you wanna bring that up?
I did remember my other item. Which, which is, um, we had talked last meeting, last council meeting, about, uh, we had gotten the, uh, report from the auditor.
Yeah.
And there were some things we were gonna address.
Yeah.
We talked about having a, um, a special meeting or, and, and that's what I wanted to ask, is have we scheduled that yet? I, I'd like to keep that on our radar.
I, I've got the to-do list, we'll lead into that.
Okay.
And the answer, we haven't scheduled it, uh, but we gotta, we're gonna, I'm gonna sort of parse these things out. Okay, this is the, uh, ordinance, this is the current draft, Bob worked on it, I worked on it, and Bob worked on it again, and then Laura got in and, and, uh, worked, worked on it one more time. Uh, this is similar to what we talked about before, uh, so what, the introduction is just not much, once you scroll down, we'll get to the, and we held the public hearing, and next we're gonna have an open house, which we're gonna schedule for March seventeenth, if the council makes a motion, that's a Saturday, uh, to do so. And that'll give us time to give out proper notice, uh, get some wall hangings, and Laura says the way that, uh, an open house works is we sit here and listen to people talk and say, thank you, thanks, and otherwise we're done. Pretty hard to do.
The information will be, um, placed throughout the area that we hold a meeting.
Is that gonna be at seven?
Seventeen.
It's on a Saturday, so it'd probably be more like ten or eleven.
Ten or eleven, okay.
Depends on the council's timeframe.
At nine o'clock, we're just getting up.
All right, well, we've thrown down some more. And that's the, the basis of going, I don't think, there's nothing new there, okay, uh... And we're moving, and it's basically pretty straightforward for handling the stormwater on city streets and, uh, through runoff and keeping streets clean and not having standing water. So I'll scroll down, that's just titles and such. Oh, we've got just a little bit, uh, okay, so, uh... Again, this is, uh, sort of water treatment for the utility, and the city doesn't owe anything to individual property owners. Okay, that's definitions. And, we'll set the stormwater utility fee by resolution, and then the low-income senior discount, that's, that's normal. Okay, well, whoa, right there, I, oh, we've got some exempts, but there's not much that's actually exempt from this. Okay, basically, if it's developed, it's covered, billing, sort of water plate. Uh, first rate's gonna be very, very simple, not much to adjust on it later on, this thing may crawl as we get new requirements in. Okay, here we go, property owner's responsibilities. Basically, the property owners, uh, gotta keep their stormwater on their property, and, uh, it's got to be met for all new construction and for all existing construction by April twenty thirteen. Single driveways, 'cause the motorhomes with driveways, there's two ways that they're done, they either tilt back into the property or they tilt forward, uh, onto the street, and probably about half and half. And, uh, any portion of the driveway that's in the easement area can tilt forward so that the rain that falls on that portion goes into the street. Now, it, all, all driveways that are currently in existence, and Bob and I both driven around town looking at them, uh, are, are basically grandfathered in, there's no giant driveways that, uh, drained into the street that we know of. Uh, we've also said that gutters shall not drain into the streets either by the driveway or directly. There are some houses where the gutters discharge into the driveway, which then goes down the street, and we're saying, all of that stormwater stays on your grass. And then, uh, we got a, a general waiver, uh, Bob being the, being the science guy, uh, came up with how much burst of rain we get, uh, over a period of time, and any rainfall that exceeds one point five inches in a twenty-four hour period, if your stormwater control is overcome, it's overcome, it happens maybe three times a year or something. It's interesting, talked to the Department of Ecology, and they said, uh, exceptional weather, uh, or several adjectives, I said, what does that mean in inches, and basically, we don't know. So, Goldbar has set a numerical, uh, number here that we can say, based on the Goldbar elevating school range, uh, whether or not, uh, it's an exceptional event. The, uh, also yesterday in, uh, Monroe Mon- out of the, uh, the Herald, there was a big article about the new hot diggity dog thing of going to, uh, low-impact development and maintaining stormwater on, on the properties and not using storm drains, and there was kind of, that's, uh, really something people look into, well, Goldbar's doing it, and also our two businesses that are going up, uh, Jake Sharp's Place and the, uh, Arday Refrigeration Retail Store are all using low-impact design. So, Goldbar is doing what people say ought to be done. Let's scroll down a bit more. Oops, let's go back, there we go, okay. And property owners encourage the gutters should make every, to keep the gutters clear of debris, clean up drain grates. The city will be doing that, but it's not that hard a job, and if, uh, you keep it clear in front of your house, and, you know, it doesn't, doesn't puddle up as much, and it, and it makes, it just makes it easier for the city to maintain. And, uh, we have a lot of streets that, uh, basically had many swells, and those many swells just need to be maintained and keep them clear of debris and fills, and I think we've got maybe a few in town who have violated that, but we'll get, that's a change in a period of time. And then, uh, what we said, the violations, uh, in, in our standard violation code, that's ninety bucks the first day, I think a hundred and twenty-five the second, two fifty thereof, and the way I've been using it is, uh, we do the educational encouragement and then enforcement initially, uh, by the time the second step is done, if there's any hesitation, we mention what enforcement is and things are done pretty quickly. So, uh, that's, no use playing fear with logic with this thing. All right, let's scroll down a little bit, oh, there, and then the city is gonna do the maintenance, right? You know, all we're, all we're proposing, all this money's gonna cover is the maintenance and what we got is, uh, retention punt maintenance, uh, ooh, still got refurbishing, uh, retention punts in there, and I think that's probably, uh, that's too expensive to put in right now, but we were talking about, you mulling them and cleaning them out is one thing, the refurbishing, you dig it all out and put what, dirt and grass in, have you been done with retention punts?
Suppose that's special education, you're a educator.
Okay, so that gets to be sort of expensive, and we'll be looking at things like grants and such, if you can do that. And then, of course, it'll be revised, it's necessary to reflect new regulations and rules. Don't know if that's gonna be, but expect them to come, 'cause they're talking about, uh, uh, federal rules getting, uh, different, different all the time, there's more of us in the same footprint, so we have to be more careful. It affects the cities, the big cities, the urban areas, a lot more than it does the Goldbars, but we have to face it. Okay, I rattled on it up, any comments, questions?
Yeah, let's have a, have a couple, uh, I guess there are comments, more than questions. We had some citizen comments, um, last council meeting, directed to, uh, um, making our charges against those individuals with curbs and gutters rather than citywide, and that's not accommodated here. And so, I, I, I didn't draft it, and I guess I won't take responsibility for that, but I'm sure we'll hear from them again, and so I'd just like to ensure that you guys heard what he said.
Yes.
Can I comment on that?
It's your turn.
And I gave that quite a bit of thought, actually, 'cause you're actually an person myself, and I think you, we're in the same boat. We don't drain anything onto the streets.
Right.
And yours?
Uh, the street drains into my driveway.
Yeah, and, uh, uh, so the idea that, uh, somebody is paying for stormwater runoff with their property is a misconception. And then, you know, then, however we might be able to make that clear, I hope to be able to make that clear, that, that this is not a, a fee for how much water runs off your place, it's a fee to maintain our streets. That's simple.
Okay.
And I gave it a regular thought, 'cause, uh, I, the public's opinion.
Right, I, I'm not objecting to the fact that it's a fee to maintain the streets, and I, and I actually feel that that's a citizen responsibility, and that it is as well, um, but, uh, but I, but I do like to appease the citizens when we can and not violate them. So, so the fact that you gave it consideration is, is good enough at this point. The other item that I brought up that isn't in here is the snow removal, and I know that's not in the budget, which is why I'm, I'm asking you to consider putting it in.
That's, yeah, John was correct, because when it snows, where it melts, where's the gold goes, and storm sys- storm drains. And one of the things they do clean is when there's a pile of snow, Sherry or Richard's out there with a shovel, cleaning off the grates, so that it can filter there, and that was a good point, and I think we just ran out of coal to clean there now, so why don't you talk it over and see? This, this is why we brought this up here, is, uh, just for review. Yes, John?
Plus, you know, if you look at the streets right now, we clean the streets and then the sand.
Right.
Sands related to snowing.
Yeah, and then sand goes into the gutters, I mean, you know, okay, so snow with water, I mean, it's just...
To me, there's another complication, when I was talking to Denise about this, and, and she was fearful, now she's gonna have to spend more time chasing up bills, and who's paying for this, and making sure if they pay or don't, you know, or try to knock off the seven dollars or whatever five dollars, whatever it is. And, and in fact, that's why I asked you about the order of bills, you know, if somebody doesn't pay the whole bill, how, how much you gotta work, you know what I'm saying? And that was the purpose of that, but, uh, you may be in trouble in the lotting and the sta- staff time is my, pretty much my concern on that one.
Yeah.
'Cause right now, we're assuming the same as last year, we're gonna be burdening the staff, so that's my, I have a caution here too.
It's mainly recycling, right, and whoever has recycling will get the bill, plus the business water.
Right.
Okay.
The other part of that will be that if we charge for snow removal, they're gonna expect it on, on all the streets that are paved, so...
This is also brought up.
Yeah. So, but, but I would like that considered to be put in here, because we don't have budget for it anywhere in the budget, and we know from experience, I think, uh, one to two times a year, we're gonna be involved with that.
Yeah, like this year, we have about a hundred hours of Richard's time in our streets, that's his five percent, that's all we had for them, and that's, we use forty for these snow starts. So, uh, there was extenuating circumstances on that, but nonetheless, it doesn't take much. But again, if we add snow to the ordinance, then we're gonna add snow to the budget, and, like I said, we'll be, we'll be, that'll be continuous work for us. Okay. Any other comments?
I think the last comment is, uh, that I have is, we're attempting to make this as simple as we can.
Yeah, okay.
And, you know, I mean, really, uh, and for my own case, you know, this is the first ordinance I've ever written in my life, so I'm a little nervous about the long-term success of it. Thinking it might be needing to be modified as we learn more, and so I think if we keep an open attitude about all of this and keep listening, uh, it would be a good path.
Yeah, agree, I think this is a, a really good start.
Cool.
Okay, let's go to the next one. Fee schedule, we're not gonna have the fee schedule for stormwater, because it's not time for it. Okay, fee schedule resolution, if I recite the fee, this is what we talked about last time? Free, it's pretty simple. I have to speak about, okay, uh, we're changing, uh, the fees from three dollars and ninety-five cents per month for residential users to four dollars and twenty-five cents per month, and then the monthly fee for recycling services for multifamily residents will go from four twenty-five a month to five twenty-five a month. And that will, that will cover the cost in that fund. Okay.
What is the effect?
Last time, the last time we raised fees? You know, last time, Laura had farted, the last time we raised fees, we did not, uh, raise them for the multifamily, so that we were actually, they were the last leader, but it's not that big of, so we, she made that correction this time.
So, so they're increasing?
Yeah.
What is the effectiveness?
Uh, probably not this billing cycle, but next, do we have an effectivity?
It's the next billing cycle, because the bill's about tomorrow.
Okay, well, not be tomorrow, it'll be next month.
Okay, so it won't be charged against March?
That is correct, is that March going out tomorrow?
Uh, no, we bill one month behind, so it will be...
Will be charged for March, but not February.
Okay, okay, and you're looking for a motion for that?
A motion to...
We need to do a reading by title.
Oh, okay, I'll do a reading by title. City of Goldbar, Washington, resolution number twelve dash one, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Goldbar, Washington, amending the city's fee resolution to set rates increasing recycling fees. Entertain a motion to approve the resolution?
I make a motion to approve that we approve the resolution as written.
I'll second it. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you very much. Okay, staff training, this will be quick, we had talked last time about, uh, Laura going to the, the city park training, uh, which she's scheduled to, and got a scholarship for, and, uh, so she'll be doing that when?
Uh, next Tuesday through Friday.
Tuesday through Friday, uh, we talked about Denise, uh, trying to make the, uh, animal control, uh, training, the, the series one, however, by the time we look at the details, we missed the cutoff date for, for signing up, so she is gonna plan to, uh, there will be some, uh, one-day sessions in the fall, and then she will hit the full training next year, twenty thirteen. And did talk to, uh, what, uh, deputy book about it, and he said he thought it was absolutely a requirement for her to do that because of the, the situation, so he was very much like that. And John, you're going to, uh, water?
What's that?
In August, okay. So we've got, uh, that's, now what we've got planned through there, uh, any other formal trainings that, uh, are coming up this year? Okay, and, 'cause Richard went through the water training in the spring, and John's gonna go in the fall. All right, and then, uh, so your expenses are gonna be the living expenses, or...
Yeah, just the hotel.
Hotel, and, uh...
Food's covered, the rest of the car plans.
Okay, and you're gonna drive your car third back?
I'm taking the city's car.
You're taking the city car, okay, so what's the hotel gonna run?
It's government rate of seventy-seven and nine.
Seventy-seven and nine, okay, so that's gonna be two nights or three? Three nights, two hundred bucks, three, okay. So, uh, would I like to get council consensus, or can I make a motion to, uh, approve that, it's within the budget?
Well, I'll make a motion that we approve that, because I wanna have a little discussion.
Okay, you'll have a second.
I'll second.
Okay.
Okay, the discussion I wanted to have, actually, I was thinking about this, uh, I guess last, after last meeting, but, uh, when, when I, um, when I went to Boeing and, and told them I was gonna run well, so they asked me to outline for a full year what meetings or what absences, I would be away from work at Boeing, um, to support this.
Okay.
And so my thinking, after having actually thought through this, is that we should have an annual plan for training, and that should be laid out well in advance... And that should be laid out well in advance of the year, so that we know who's going when and where. I mean, if these things are recurring on an annual basis, that's, that's easy. I know there's things that'll come up that won't be in that plan, but if, we can, we can always amend the plan if it's necessary. But we should have that plan.
Well, I agree with the budget.
Right, exactly.
I agree, yeah, that's, now, this is probably the first time we've talked about training for the rest of the year in a council meeting. And so I'm gonna see, then Laura had a nervous twitch. John, you have, your, the water training, that's pretty much, that's in November, you know what's gonna happen in the fall of the year?
I won't know until.
They don't tell us.
I'll know when this, when I, winter conferences, you know, in March, probably.
Okay, but we do know that you're gonna go, it's every year, right? So you go once a year, Richard will go once a year.
Okay, you know how many days, that's the key thing, that's one of the key things, is to know how many days, and then in general.
Well, you know, on something like that. If it's like on Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and we could say we're leaving on Monday at noon. But I'm not, I don't want the council to think that it's Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. And then be requested to be here Friday, I might want to take Friday off, maybe it's in Vancouver or Eastern Washington, I'm gonna take a day off. And like this, like this year, Richard was in training, then he went over and saw his folks.
Yeah, so that's understandable.
But it's usually, usually three and a half days, or it's required by the Health Department for continuing education.
Yeah, but that's, you know, plan your vacation, what day you're gonna take, I mean, you're gonna have any time to do that. He's talking about a budgeting thing, how many, how many person days? And how much money are we spending on training? How much is required, how much is, what, what is just beneficial but not required?
That's right. It's not, it's, the council has no responsibility for managing you on a day-to-day basis. So when you take vacation is not something you would ask me about.
Usually, we put just enough in, and I can do that, usually it's in the budget, you know. We don't pad the training in the budget, so to speak.
Well, he's talking.
But as soon as I find out when the dates are, I'll let the council know.
It's not so much the dates, it's about the time of year, by the corner, maybe, and how many days. But that's what it is, you know, it's three and a half days in the spring, and three and a half days in the fall for you. Two and a half days once a year.
Three and a half.
Three and a half days for most of the trains. The animal trainings, two weeks, I mean, it's serious. So, but we know that's gonna be in the spring, it's two weeks, so we can work on that.
I can imagine.
All right. Good. So that's something that, I'll let you take the point, because it's a budget thing. I mean, we're just doing what our, we're doing the management allocation discussion. Okay. Oh, we're gonna approve hotel expenses, are we ready?
Huh? We've got a vote, man.
You all got a vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Actually, it was under five hundred dollars, it didn't need it, but. Okay, this is gonna be the fun one. This is the ongoing projects in the past, and this starts getting into what's. Okay, well, that's, that's great.
I have a comment.
Yeah.
I can't read this. I just simply can't, you know?
Well, okay, next time, we'll put, we'll go ahead.
Two pages.
No, we'll put it on eleven by seventeen.
We couldn't get it any bigger.
Ten pages?
No, we didn't want it any bigger.
I'll have to, you can pivot with your print function, it's different.
So, no problem.
All right, first off, with water, since water is pretty well settled, it's the, it's over fifty percent of our labor times in there. And it's heavy this year because of the maintenance, the reservoir that's going on. And so that's, so typically, weekly, there's the system maintenance upgrade, there's always something going on. There is replacement of old meters, there's cleaning of hydrants, and just a bunch of stuff. The, and then, of course, the meter reading, monitoring the pumps, and the, and the chemistry. And then on-call, as we're all aware, for emergency repairs. We've got the water system plant update. The bases for do-its was sent to the engineers last week. So that's, that's gonna be myself and John primarily. And then, and then we've got the new reservoir, which has all the federal contracts, so that's mainly John and Laura. Laura going through the twelve thousand rules and how to get paid. And John, keep a tight eye on the, on the project as it goes. Okay, scroll down to training. Okay, we've got typical training that goes on. Sherry does OSHA-type training on video basis, so we meet that requirement. Laura does her, has a monthly meeting in Everett with the Snohomish County City Clerks. Denise has the emergency management work, which is, was that the right? Okay. Denise has the emergency management liaison work, which is with the fire district, and also the school, and then whatever, Snohomish County primarily. And then on whatever, and they do the occasional tabletop emergency check. Laura's got the annual financial training, city clerk training. And then, of course, John and Richard have the annual water system training. And is your financial system training, is that yearly, or is that by?
It's yearly, it's yearly, but I haven't actually been able to go through it for the past three years.
Okay, so, so when is that?
That one's in September, usually. The clerk training is in March, always, and the financial training is in September, potentially, other things are going on. With the budget and stuff, so.
And so how many days is that on?
The, the conferences are always three and a half days.
Three and a half days. And, and so let me ask one more question. Is that restricted just to staff?
The financial training?
Yes.
No, it's through, um, the Washington Financial Officer Association, so anyone can attend.
So you could have a councilperson and yourself, and you can, and so I'll put it out to the council to consider that. I'm not asking you to approve it, just put it in the back of your mind, because I'm not certain that that might not be good for myself.
Yeah, there's also another, there's quite a few trainings through Washington Financial. The conference for the council member may not be as beneficial as the one or two-day trainings that are offered.
Oh, okay.
I took an A W C training course, and it, I think it was, that was.
It's, it's, it's actually Washington Financial.
I took it, it was absolutely helpful. In fact, that was what my comment's gonna be, always gonna suggest that, and start looking at that.
That's the, that's the big budget one in that, so not only in August.
Okay.
It's evident. I think, even though I'm not on the finance committee, knowing a little bit more about it.
Yeah, it gives you, you know, the thousands of rules that go through there. And you also talk to other, other financial people, very, very good speakers, and they make it very clear.
They do it more specifically for the budget, so the council members can understand the budget better, the budget process better.
And that's in August?
August, I think it's in August, I can't be for sure, I'll have to check.
Is that, I'd at least know the date, so I'd at least put it on my calendar.
It's a two-day course, and they switch between, they have two different ones, they usually have one on the.
East, east coast, east side.
East side, yeah, east side.
Over there.
The other side, well, it's, it's not actually that far over there.
I think mine was Leavenworth where they had.
Yeah, they usually have it in Leavenworth, and they, other one, I think, is in Landwood, it just depends on.
And, and those are always mid-week, I don't know, UK would be better, but.
Yeah, they're always mid-week. I think it's either, I think it's like a Wednesday and Thursday, or a Thursday, Friday, I can't.
Are scholarships available?
Um, the city is authorized two scholarships a year, so we have to really, but.
That's total of two scholarships.
Yeah, total, all year.
Yeah, we already used that.
No, that, the council members, that doesn't count towards the two. It's the main scholarships that are the big courses, or like the two-day courses or the three-day courses.
All right. So we need to put council training on there, that's, that's the comment that came forth, okay?
Yeah, I've heard a lot of people talk about council training, yes.
Yeah, it's, and, you know.
Well, where's, where news is, at least I am.
Well, and also, you need refresher courses, I mean, really.
And the laws change every year, so.
Probably not at the council level so much, deadlines changes for you.
For me, but the budget finances, each year, they put out another booklet, okay, this is the changes, so.
So, so that does generate one more question on my part. And again, being part of the finance committee, is here at City Hall, is there a backup for you?
No.
Or you're, you're the only one trained in the financial system?
Well, I've tried to train, but didn't successful.
Yeah, well, I mean.
Yeah, because there's other people that just don't have the time to learn, so.
And are the native, you have to have some native ability to do the county work.
Right.
Engineers of county or accountants are different, I don't know, you've noticed?
Yeah, yeah.
So.
I don't know why you engineers have such a problem with finances.
I want to say what engineers think of accountants, anyway, go ahead. Okay, then we'll put that on there, and yes, sir.
Yeah, and so, so since there isn't a backup, I don't, again, and I'm not talking about, so you're saying, there is this, this natural thing, too, that people have the ability, or don't have the ability, or the interest, or don't have the interest, but so, so we should also consider whether we are doing, so whether Laura has to go every year, or whether you should actually switch off every other year and have someone who could back her up in case she has to go.
The backing up is probably more the bias training than anything else, how to use the accounting system? And that's web dollars, isn't it?
So that's not what this is?
No, that's not what this is. This is not biased accounting software training. This is state of Washington, ten thousand rules on any.
Yes, the financial rules, yeah, okay.
And.
Which change for the best for the government.
So, but, but that does bring up a point, bias training is down here, and it's typically soft, because it's, they do it over the internet. So we need to add, let me get a marker on the vice here. Counsel, bias, okay.
And I'll bring back dates and what I can find from the financial officer.
You set up as a new one, or?
I believe it's in Landwood, it's, it might be a little further out, but I can't, I haven't spent a couple of years since I looked at it.
Now we go down to the interesting part. This is part of stuff that we talked about, January, February, but it was last year. And plus comments from the auditor, oh, okay, good, great, great. Okay, first off, we got the employee handbook in work, and also added Title II, because Title II covers employee descriptions and such. Chris started working on that, and staff course will be put in there. We got the finance, and we also need Title III looked at, and that's Kim. And you had brought stuff up last time about practical ways of running a small operation, and things that need to be changed. We've got stormwater utility ordinance, and Bob's taking the part on that, we need to finish that up this month. We won't get the second reading in until April, but that's pretty well far along, and we just need to refine it. We have a gas pipeline ordinance that we need to do, it's not critical. We have all the data, we have a very short stub of a natural gas pressurized pipeline in the city of Gobar. And Williams is every year sending letters out, stuff like that, so, and we don't, and it's in an area where there is no construction expected in the near future. So that's something, there's some Title VIII upgrade, a bunch of small stuff, it's obsolete, Title IX update, where we're gonna use R C Ws instead of writing up ordinance that the next time the legislature needs might be obsolete. And then there's some old telecom description in Title XII. And, oh, there's a radon rule in Title XV. And so all of those are just stuff that was done anywhere from ninety-five to two thousand and two, I believe, that just needs to be cleaned up. Okay, here's gonna be the fun one, we're talking about going, here at Examiner, that's, that affects Title XIX a whole bunch. I'm gonna try to get an ad hoc committee on that, that's a citizens' ad hoc committee. And we get that done, just simply add it off to two people, two or three people who have practiced, have experienced at that. And then I'll know about that next week, if we're gonna get that, and I'll bring it up the next council meeting. And May, and I like to get that knocked out by May, because we may have a, something else come up we needed. And then April, Laura and I need to get the I T call for bids. We have gone through the R C Ws and rules and such, and our situation, a very simple call for bids for I T. And a very simple rating, so council will probably get involved in that one way or the other, that's something we gotta get going. It's, again, not a crisis, but it's simple and small. Natural hazard plan update, John, do you have Denise, are you working on that? You got a status on that?
It's just ongoing year by year. Probably about seven years ago, the city got a grant. For natural hazard plan, all the different cities did, the county did, we all just kinda combined, working together, then apart, so they all come up with the same solution, and that's through Snohomish County, they have a big plan, we're a part of that plan, and every year, that's updated. So that's an ongoing.
So I should be angry about that. Okay, now, the eight-hundred-pound gorilla is the city comprehensive plan update. I don't look at the comprehensive plan, I don't think there's a tremendous amount of change, I like the way we've written everything, but there is some. And again, I'm thinking that's an ad hoc meeting, since we're not, evidently, we don't have a planning commission. And so that's something that we have to be working on. I don't have a schedule on it yet, again, it's not a crisis, and we're probably way behind schedule on it. We've got shoreline master plan update going on, and we just need to bring that home, it's going through ecology. If ecology blesses it, well, then we've got basically turned the grant, the rest going out, and we've had public hearings on everything else. And it will have a, they'll have an open house, too, John, do we have another open house over there?
Yeah.
Think about the shoreline master plan, the theme of biological option trumps it, as far as I can tell. So we don't wanna spend any more money on what we have, and we've got a grant, we definitely don't wanna go past it. And, yeah, there's the grant. And they give us John and Laura's federal grant, so, or state grant, so she has to make sure we do everything correctly. Okay, I've got the US Tubidation Safety Sidewalk, looks like we'll finish that by July, got a grant through the, actually, I guess it's P S R C. And then hopefully get everything ironed out and get the budget under control somehow. We may end up not being able to take the sidewalk all the way to Seventeenth. But think about it, at least from Seventeenth to just the other side of Right Way Auto is a clear walking area, so. We'll try to get it all the way in. And then the city's signing, like we talked about, we got the Snohomish County feds on it, and we're waiting for them to come back. They need to build and install, and, and there's two intermediate things I'm gonna make them do, where they're gonna have to do a plan to do it. We have bulk of materials, and the rest of the building, not much. Two, they're gonna have to listen to Sherry's OSHA tapes, because otherwise, they will be little tarsus swinging on top of the ladders. And so, I love the entertainment, but. but, uh, yes, sir.
Can we go back for a moment to US two pedestrian safety sidewalk?
Sure.
Is that, um, is that a requirement, um, laid on the city, or is that a project this city just decided to take on? Um, and the reason I'm asking that is because there's sidewalks on the north side of the highway, there's businesses on the south side of the highway, there's no sidewalks on the south side of the highway, and as far as I know, you haven't made any access across the highway. So-
Yes.
So, obviously, we don't have the money to take all that on at the moment, but is that in our long-range plan? Is that, um, do, do we seek grants to do that?
Yes. What happened, that sidewalk, we tried to sneak it in with the culvert bridge in the two-way left turn lane. And DOT could not justify it. It was not part of that. They couldn't justify the sidewalk as part of what the definition they had, that it was a, a highway safety. So they actually did plan for it, so we were able to execute it. Then we got a grant, which, uh, everybody was oohing and aahing, knowing how much money, uh, that grant was for, for just a little sidewalk. Boy, you could really go to really do everything you want to, I don't know. Uh, so anyway, uh, that's where that came from. Now, uh, there are two projects. Uh, there's a safe route to school grant coming out. I'm not sure, we'll be able to work on it, get it in time. But for a bulb out on First Street at Lewis, uh, there's a school bus stop there, uh, and the kids are standing back. Drivers come in, can't see the kids because they're shadowed by the parked cars. And if we have a bulb out there, you know, you'll be able to see the kids standing there. Uh, that's one project, uh, that we've already gone for grants twice. Uh, got good ratings, we didn't get the grant. And then there's another project about a US two crosswalk, uh, along First Street to connect, uh, basically, the barber shop, uh, to the, uh, park, I'm not talking community transit about that. They're, they're, they're happy to go in with this to apply for the grant. They don't have any money either. Uh, and again, that's a matter of getting to that. And I don't know, and that, that, that needs to be put on the list. It's long-term compared to the others, but, uh, it needs to be on there. Okay. Thank you. And what have we got? Uh, okay, now we scroll on down, and there's the ongoing on-call, record request, record request losses, subdivision developments. Uh, I don't see much going on. Ongoing is permitting, fences, plumbing, this, that, and the other. Need to update our permit forms. Uh, some of them still are dated back. And got things that are not, that are contrary to our ordinance and rules. Uh, got the, uh, twice a month, roughly, the, the farmatory crew comes out, and Sherry, uh, has done work on projects. Then we got park maintenance, and, what was that? Oh, mowing, probably mow, mow US two park twice this year. That's all we, the labor we got. Uh, Sherry cleans the parks, she does the plumbing, she doesn't do anything else, just takes the trash out twice a week. Code enforcement, uh, it's, it's on call. Again, we don't have any, uh, any real dedicated time to it. And we do the, what I call the triple E approach, uh, education, encouragement, enforcement. And we typically, uh, look to get two, two violations before we have to, you know, definitely serious violation. Take door hangers out all the time, but as far as actually spending the time and effort to work them out, we don't, we just don't have that. And it's not, I don't see that being a much of a problem either. Uh, we don't have a, we had a couple of serious things, and we got them resolved. Uh, council minutes, Laura does, warrants and bills and council packets. So that's the, uh, to-do list that we have. And, uh, appreciate the comments and all that.
There's, uh, you know, for a long-term project, I don't see anything on replacing water pipes.
Oh, coming out of the water.
No, Ben, the water pump.
Comp plan, yes, it will-
Little can, sorry.
Yeah, it'll be a fifteen-year project.
Oh, yeah, huge, I understand.
Seven million dollar project. Yeah, so, the, uh, I'm not thinking about that.
It's a big number to do.
Yeah.
Have a water pump panel out to those smaller projects.
Yeah, the water pump panel is buried in there somewhere. Where do the water-
We just have the system in here.
I don't have it on there.
Water system improvements?
Water system.
No, no.
This is different, isn't it?
Care. Oh.
Well, I mean, we still have to ask about this pipe, no?
No, it's up, it's, there's a, it says weekly, monthly, monthly, and then-
Oh, projects ordinances update.
It says contract for water system plan update. Oh, just the con, yeah.
That's the contract.
Tiff one down.
Oh, yeah, there it is, old door. Okay, yeah, I did have it there. Okay.
I just have a small question, um, and, and Sherry's park maintenance. It seems like we have less homeless activity at the park this year than we did last year. Is, is, is my observation accurate?
The, the green leader, or at least we got the co-lesser around, turned out had warrants, uh, outstanding warrants in California, has the Snohomish County Sheriff's Department helped California out. And then one of the other co-lesers, co-leses, whatever, uh, evidently got herself a good insight that she had got a job or something over there. So, uh, and then, of course, with the new ordinance, when you have the kids smoke, drink, throw trash everywhere, and the deputies, um, encouraged that sort of cessation of activities to all of us.
Um, one of the people who had been over there, I, two or three times, has seen her in the gorilla.
Yeah.
And had contact with her, so.
We talked to a couple, and, uh, a, a couple of them were just, you know, they, they would love to get out of their situation. And, uh, we, we talked to them about what they, what they could do, or where they'd go, and, and one or two of them managed to find a better place to try to get back on their feet.
That's good news.
Yeah.
I'm sure keeping all the citizens happy.
So, yes, sir?
Yeah, with the farmatory crew, there, me and Sherry both split up.
Oh, you do?
Yeah.
Okay.
Cause there might be issues along the way, and then we both talk about what we want to do, and what we want out of them.
Okay. And do they have enough hand tools now? Cause you got the, the weed eaters.
That's something we're gonna go through, cause we just got the schedule today.
Okay.
That could be here, so that's where we'll put together, make sure we got about, uh, here, these will be up and operating.
And one of the things across US two we've talked about for two years now is trimming the, the low-hanging branches on the trees.
Yeah.
So that, uh, that means you need to get the chainsaw attachment to the weed eater, uh, whatever, branch cutter?
Holter.
What?
Holter.
Holter, okay.
Yeah.
And, uh, so that's something that probably ought to put on the list. Cause again, that's, uh, it just, that's just, uh, something that Desi used to, like, get there.
To work on that equipment, make sure we got it all ready to go.
Sure. Right, thank you. Any other questions on this? Yes, good question. Well, let's move on to the next one. You wanna say something?
No, um, I was expecting you to ask for motion, but I was gonna ask you to table that here, but that's-
Well, this is just ongoing. So what we got next? Okay, the waste management, uh, allied waste, I mean, no, Rebenko agreement, Rebenko agreement.
No, they changed their name to allied waste, but keep their Rebenko, because, uh, how they do their contracts, but it's the same company. Their name is actually Allied Waste Rebenko.
I'll look at my bill the next time. Okay. You have the contract here, and it's the extension. This is the normal fee that we've done, uh, five-year extension. So, are we open to discussion on this? Yeah, go ahead.
Um, and this is probably not a change. And so if it's not a change, we don't need to discuss it too much, little bit. It says ashes have been deemed a special waste, and I don't understand that.
On our previous contract, ashes were allowed to be recyclable, but now, um, the state has, um, mandated that all ash waste is now hazardous waste, so it has to be, because those are going to be, not be put into recycling.
Can we put it in the order? Oh, now, how can that be a hazardous waste?
It's, it's not, it's not a recyclable waste, or like, recycled it. It's more garbage. But it's, it's, it's just something they had to add to it.
Okay, yeah, presentable. Okay, so, so you could have put ashes as recyclable in order, right?
Yep.
Oh, that's not true.
It's not, it's not, yeah.
Yeah, on the list, they may get them there.
Yeah, no, they, they actually changed it a long time ago, but they never changed it in our contract.
And I was just curious about the, um, the fire station.
Yes, it's the, it was this one, right? Cause Highway Two's not in city Gobar.
And that was, that was why I was wondering, because when I had, we had talked with the-